Yeah, I think we're ready. Okay. This is, I'll call this commission meeting to order. This is Tuesday, October 21st, 2014. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda for today?
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do we have, yes, we have minutes. Did we have minutes this morning?
I think we did.
I think so. I think they were up to date. I would accept a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
The first thing on our agenda is public comment. We have a number of people here. If you have any, any public comment you would like to make that is not related to an item that is already on our agenda, please do so now. Okay. We will continue on with this. Our first item up on our agenda is the bid proposal for Lake Printing. This is with our county collector. And we have had two bids on this. One from Edward J. Rice and one from Lake Printing. And Lake Printing requested a chance to comment. And so we have agreed to put this on the agenda for today. So, having said that, we also had with us Vicki Burns and Teresa from the collector's office. We do have letters from Vicki with her statements on why she has chosen Rice, Edward J. Rice, for her bid. And they will be submitted into the official minutes at the conclusion of the meeting. Anything else we need to add? Okay. Then?
Well, just like, you know, the current situation with, with the bid proposal. You folks have, or have expressed a concern on why you didn't receive the bid. And you asked to speak before the commission to explain what you can do, I guess, as far as what the county collector is asking for. So we'd be happy to turn it over to you and let you make your presentation.
Okay. Maybe I'll go first. Gary Lorenz, I am the owner of Lake Printing right now. Lake Printing has been a business sixty-five years here in, always in Camden County. I have actually been associated with it for twenty-nine years. In nineteen eighty-five, we purchased the company, my partners and I, we were out of St. Louis. And I've been down here and had a residence or a mobile home or something to live in since nineteen sixty-five. And so I love the lake, I've been here all my life and raised my kids here. And wanted a reason to be here. And in nineteen ninety-eight, we sold Color Art, which was our primary, which was our main company in St. Louis, along with Lake Printing, to a public company. And I became president of that public company for five years. I worked for them for another two years. Then I cut a deal with them to buy Lake Printing back. And when I bought Lake Printing, it had about thirty-five people working there. Business was decent. We have almost doubled the sales with new equipment that we've added. That, we also get a big bill on personal property tax every year because of we added the new equipment. And so actually, then we continued going and going until two thousand and eight. In two thousand and eight, we got hit like everybody else did. It really got hurt in the business. And so it's been a struggle to stay in business since two thousand and eight. So we're looking for anything and everything we can possibly find. Kevin walked in and he's a guy that has loved the lake for years and years. And finally left his job in Iowa. And he was a specialist in variable printing for the casino industry. And another one of their employees came with us out of Iowa. And so we're actually bringing a lot of nice work to the lake for our people to produce. But it's in its growing stages. And I think when we brought that in, well, all of a sudden, like Carol brought in, Carol has been a salesperson on this account and down here at the lake for eight years now from us. And when Carol brought that in, I said, boy, this is, this is a piece of cake for what we're doing. This was last year. And so we got the information on the bid and we bid on the tax statements. I guess I actually brought it in because, you know, I get tax statements for the company. I get tax statements for my house and my boats and my docks and everything else. And, and so I sat with Kevin and made sure that this was exactly what we did. And, and we're looking at it as actually taking it in our own community. We would like to take, have we produced one for anybody else? No, we haven't. But we'd like to take this as our own community area and use it as a launchpad to be able to go into a lot of other small counties because we just feel like this stuff is a piece of cake compared to the intricate pieces that we work on currently. And I'll let Kevin talk to, you know, what we currently do in this particular area that we feel like so heavily qualifies us for this business. Kevin?
My background, I've eighteen years in what I call complex variable data applications. And mostly with the casinos, I have done things for Wells Fargo and automotive branches. But the casinos has been the biggest thing. And I've got some samples here that I can show you. I'll just show you this one right off the bat. But in the casino industry, they send out these cash, cash offers. And those are actually for Harrah's that were going through the approval process right now to become a vendor. They print them the size of a dollar bill, two and sixteenths by, or two and nine sixteenths by six and an eighth. And those are put right in the slot machine with your player club card. So it rings up if, if you have a hundred dollars or if you have five dollars, whatever it be. So the QC procedures that go into place to make sure these get out correctly are the same with Vicki's job. And I can understand the reluctance to want to send this to another vendor. But when Carol and I met with you, I think it was last January or February,
Yeah.
I think you had a programmer there that-
I couldn't remember if you were the one that was here or not.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And you had a programmer that was here. And I talked to him and he told me that when we got the files, they're already programmed. So what I'd offer to do, that I do the same thing for casinos. We're doing one right now for Route sixty-six in Arizona that we take last month's data matrices and artwork and actually go through the exercise of programming it so they get the proofs and they can look at them and go, yeah, they know what they're doing. This is correct. And that's what I've offered to do before for these tax statements is take that file, go back and literally produce several records and bring back. Because I know it's important that Cliff gets his and Carol gets hers and these don't get mixed up. Plus, we have a piece of equipment now that's, it's kind of on the leading edge where you put the little two D barcode on it and it inserts them as it goes. So it reads that two D barcode. And if Gary just gets two sheets, it stops, it inserts those two sheets in an envelope. If somebody gets four, it knows when it gets into that barcode, stops and sends those out. So we check the quantities all the way through, every step of the way. I mean, we keep track of every piece, not one, you know, not one goes unaccounted for. We do it by checking them back against the file. Because when this piece of equipment reads it, it actually goes back and compares it to the database that there was eighty-nine thousand three hundred and two records. And there was eighty-nine thousand three hundred and two that went through this. So with the mailing, I know these have to be broken up into individual mailings because you can't send a combination. You have to send all the number tens that has one page, all the number tens that have two pages, so forth. So we take the weight of that mailing too. And after the Satori software does the postal programming, we check the weight before it goes out the door. So if it's off over three or four pounds, we know we have to go back and recheck that. But I can sit here and tell you that I'm very confident we can do this job even if we had to program it. And I'd take the files and offer that no charge, the test to do this.
Well, speaking to the post office candidate, we're mailing hundreds of thousands of pieces in our local post offices. And Kevin's got experience on a national basis with post offices. And we're getting more support out of the Osage Beach Post Office. It's just amazing how, how great those people have been for us. You know, they, they come on site-
And verify.
-prove this stuff. And we're going into Canada with these things. We're going to all over the United States. So it's not like, I don't think we're like a local, local business. I mean, probably about sixty-five percent of our business is coming from major corporations, you know. And we do tons of work for Macy's, not along this kind of line, but tons of work for them. So I think we're qualified, that we're above what I would call a mom and pop shop in this area, you know. And I think we're a nice sized printer for this area.
Well, anybody that's just doing the business of just printing this and this is all they offer, they're not going to make it. You know, you have to diversify now. And printing has become a commodity. And when we can offer these extra touches, you know, it's more value added for us. But the QC procedures, it costs more to verify and make sure these things get done accurately. And through the equipment we've bought, we don't have any human error. I mean, we've taken the human error out of it to make sure this is correct. And everybody has to have their first time doing something, you know. And I do appreciate your reluctance to do this because I understand that if this gets messed up, your life is just heck. So I understand that. And like I said, we'd be willing to take, you know, last year's file that you just sent out, whatever, go through the steps and show you that we can do this.
Cliff had told me that y'all had asked for a mailing list when you were here before. But I wouldn't even have a mailing list. That comes from the assessor's office. They, but, because I said I didn't remember anybody asking me for a mailing list.
I can't remember the guy's name that programmed. Was it Paul? Was that his name?
I didn't do a mailing list. That, the assessor's office does the addressing and all that.
We were going to get the file from, was it Paul? Paul, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, we were going to get the file and go back and produce some of the shells and actually print it out so you could check it.
What kind of format do you guys use?
Well, just basically everything. I mean, it could be an Excel spreadsheet, comma, delimited, whatever, whatever you want. I mean, we've got them all.
And we have three full-time designers. You had mentioned something about redesigning the form. And that, that was mentioned in the bid and that was taken into consideration.
We have design money in there to redesign it.
We have used Chris Rice, so we know what he can do. That's been why I've been so reluctant. But I have not seen any proposal on what the statement would look like. I have not had seen anything in a form that would be even similar to what we do.
In printing.
It's not a brochure.
No, I know. But in printing, whatever you, whatever you buy from the printer, you own. I mean, and I, and I know that you told Carol that you thought we basically grabbed rights and stuff and-
Exactly.
We did. You know, we didn't grab license stuff, we grabbed the stuff that was submitted by your purchasing department.
That's what, that form, Linda Swift, former collector, and, and Chris Rice sat down together and designed that form. So my reluctance is, if you take the same form, I don't know if there's copyright laws or not.
And you paid that design, so you own it.
You paid for this, you own it, it's yours.
But I have not seen anything about your, what you're proposing. I had you come in and talk to you and we did talk. And your bid, in looking at it, if I have, this is broke down. And if you look at this, I can hand this around to you guys. You estimated your postage less, but that's just an estimate.
That's right.
So that comes out in the long run. That makes it look like your bids, that makes it look like your bids less. But you're going to have the actual postage.
Two thousand one hundred fifty-four dollars less. If you take the postage out of it, because that isn't-
You guys were figuring thirty-six cents a piece.
No, we just, we just took last year's numbers.
It's going to vary.
But they know, from their past history, they know how it shakes down in the presort, you know. I mean, they've got an idea.
But that's an estimate.
We just give you the best first-class rate that we can come up with.
You underestimated the postage from Chris Rice for two thousand fifty-nine dollars less. So that's a big chunk of why your bid came in lower.
Okay.
And it has nothing to do with the actual amount.
There's still two thousand one hundred fifty-seven dollars of labor that were, were less.
Well, see, that's the thing. And these yellow slots right here, you guys didn't even put a bid in there. So we don't know if you're not optioning for-
Here.
And that comes to-
They've never seen anything like this.
Four hundred and thirty-five dollars. No.
This was her breakdown.
This is our breakdown, we're comparison. In our office, we got the bids.
We submitted what was given to us, to submit.
Well, I'm telling you why the bid was less. Why your bid was less. That's what we were looking at, is to, why is your bid less? And if you look at the four hundred and thirty-five dollars, it's those yellow slots where you guys didn't have any bid.
But, but if we weren't, if we weren't asked to put anything in those spots, how could you have, how could we have known?
But I'm telling you, that's where your bid, that's part of the, and the worst thing, you didn't bid anything. So that's why yours came in less.
This is what they asked us for.
I guess we'll, we'll tell you the NCOA, you know, our Satori software system. Every mailing that's done now has to be NCOA to the post office, every mailing. So our software does it automatically. We'd never charge anybody for that.
We're not looking yet. We're looking at the final bid. Okay?
Okay.
Because yours was less.
And there's no charge for the NCOA, that's what I'm telling you.
We don't know that. All we knew is that it was not included.
Where did you come up with the things that weren't included?
Well, compared to you, between you guys and Chris Rice.
But why wouldn't they have asked us to quote some of those things when we bid the bid?
Well, Chris Rice may be more-
He's going to quote, he's going to quote things because he's had the job for a number of years.
I'm sure, I'm sure he does.
Yeah, that's fine, you know, but-
He included, some of it was envelopes. The nine by twelve envelopes, because a lot of people get a lot of statements. So they're doing figuring the nine by twelve envelopes, which I don't think you guys had anything on there. So he knows he shouldn't leave those envelopes. That's part of his charge. But that's what I'm saying, we break it down. And that's how we came up. And the hundred and eighty dollars was how much you guys are saying the second mailing difference.
Okay, so you're saying there was another-
So we're saying two thousand six seventy-four dollars of, of your bid was not even include, what I'm trying to say.
Well, even if you take that out, Vicki, we're still, we're still way low.
Seventeen hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Well, you know, we have lost bids for five dollars down here when we bid on stuff. We've lost jobs for five dollars that have caused two hundred printers.
I'm just telling you, I have not seen anything. And if this, just not, you guys haven't showed me the statement, a sample.
In the bid proposal, I said sample.
This took about five minutes to create.
I'm saying, this is what Linda and Chris Rice, I mean, you know, we can take the back, we change things as we need to. So you're going to use that same statement?
Well, use whatever you want. We'll use whatever you want.
But that's what I'm saying, I have not seen anything as to what you guys can offer.
I don't know if I, I guess it'd be easier if you use the same thing because the citizens are used to seeing that exact form. They know what they're getting.
But to me, that would kind of be unethical. If you take somebody else's form and use it.
No, it's not unethical. It'd pretty, if, if you were familiar with-
Well, he doesn't have a copyright, I guess it wouldn't be unethical.
If you're familiar with printing trade customs, you all understand that the customer owns the data. You paid for the data, you own it. He does not have a copyright. There isn't a copyright on here anywhere, you know.
So you're going, you would use the same statement?
We can do whatever you want.
We can do whatever you want.
No, not what I want. I'm saying that I don't think it would be right to use the same form that somebody else is creating.
Then we can adjust it to however you want it to be. With, without, we can change the color, we can change the design.
Anything you want.
That is-
Okay, do you know what DBF is? DBF? That's one of the files that we use. That's, that's the format that we send it in. Chris, DBF or CSV?
I'm familiar with CSV.
Or use DBF, that's what we use to send it to. So if you don't know what DBF is-
Oh, I'm not a programmer, so-
Well, that's probably who we need to be talking to then.
But if I can just get a file with that DBF on it, I can take it back and show you.
We didn't, all we're hearing is that the post office loves you guys and, and we have not seen the proof. And I, when the customer calls me and there's a problem with the statement, it comes back on me.
I understand. And I don't understand your reluctance. But I'm just saying, if you can give us a file with the data on it, we can take it back and we can print that out and show you.
And that would be DBF?
Yes.
Yeah.
You don't know what that is, though?
Well, there's a million of them and I don't know everyone because I'm not a programmer.
Savvy either.
Yeah.
But that's what we use.
I'm, I'm sure it'll work.
You give us a file and if we can't read it, we'll be the first one to come back and say we can't read it, you know.
Well, that's the end of my story.
Oh, we're asking for, I guess, there's a chance to do the test.
You're going to have to show me a sample, show me some samples, show me-
We can design it.
Send me the programmer. Send me the programmer, the one who actually does it.
Well, we're, we're told that you have the program. The programmer told him I have it all pre-prepared. We just hand you a file.
No.
That's what he told us.
That's what he told us.
He would hand you a file?
He said, it was, I sat there and talked to him in your office last January. And he said, when I said something about the program, and he told me, the programming's already completed when you get the file.
They send it to Chris Rice. Paul does, he sends it to Chris Rice.
All we're asking for is the same thing you're sending Chris Rice so we can do the test for you.
He sends it to him in DBF.
Okay. If you can get us a copy of that file, a few records in that DBF format, we can redesign the statement any way you'd like and, and come back and show you.
Well, maybe we can work on that throughout the year then.
Yeah. All we're asking for is an opportunity and, and I, I will tell you one thing. I have never told a customer, if they ask me to make a due date, I have never told them that I can make it when I know I can't. And I'm not going to tell you if I look at that file, that I can do it if I know I can't do it.
But probably in only one county. And see, we're a pretty good-sized county. And I just don't think we ought to be used for anything either. If you had a couple of smaller counties under your belt, then I could look at what you've done for them and talk to that collector. And they could tell me, yes, they did good. Like Miller County's a smaller county, Hickory, just some of the area ones I'm talking about. But just to jump in willy-nilly-
Well, everybody has-
We're not going to jump in willy-nilly. I mean, even in this program, I mean, I had to go out, I had to go out and buy insurance to be able to do this. So Lake Printing is insured like you wouldn't believe to be able to do variable work. We have responsibilities. What's that mean to you? It means that if you want to come back and sue us for something we did wrong, we got-
But the damage is already done.
Oh, okay. Well, I don't think we're going to work.
Well, you know, Chris Rice had to, Chris Rice had to have their first time with somebody. I mean, everybody has to have their first time doing anything, so-
The first time Linda, when she went into office, the first time she created, she went to Chris Rice.
I know Lake Printing and its employees probably send seventy-five thousand dollars a year here. And for us to not even be given a consideration, I just don't think it's right. It's just tremendously unfair.
That's the breakdown. Because-
You're, you're sending our money out there for somebody else's community. And it's not doing anything for the community.
I feel like I have to go with the most qualified and the most capable. And until I can see something else-
I can understand that, Vicki, I can understand that completely. And I told Gary before we ever came here. I said, I completely respect Vicki's reluctance to do this because you have a comfort level.
It's not anything you can mess with.
No, but if you can give us that file, all I'm asking for is that file. Let us take it back and we can show you what we can do. And I'm very confident we can bring that file back within a couple of days and have it all done and, and show you that we can do this job.
I know one county had done that.
Well, every casino's got horror stories too, every one of them.
They ended up, on December first, not being able to get their statements out. And I have to follow the statutes, let's say thirty days before the end of the year, those statements have to be out. And we usually have them out about the first, us, usually in October. But with the Vanguard thing going on in the assessor's office, last year and this year, it's helped us up more.
Well, Vicki, my only purpose to come here today was just to ask for that test file and have an opportunity to go through that process. And then if we show that we can do-
If Paul tells me he can get the test file and he can't.
Yeah, so if we can have that and be able to do that and show you, you know, give you a comfort level that we can do this. Because we, I would never set our company up to fail. So if I know there's something about this that doesn't look right and we can't do it, I'm going to walk away.
And I don't want to be set up to fail either.
I know that. We're both on the same page there, neither one of us want to fail.
And I have no problem going with you guys. If I can see-
Well, give us that test and we can show you.
I mean-
Well, Vicki, what would be exciting to me would be, is if we can prove we can do this job and we give a job under our belt with you guys. And you would give us the same support that you're giving Rice. That would be a big thing.
I don't have any problem with that. I have to know what I'm getting into.
I understand. That's why we'd like to do the test for you.
We understand that you don't understand printing, but we'd like a chance to show you and sell you. We'd love for you to come up and really go through our whole shop and see the whole shop and all the people that are involved and, and how intricate these jobs are that we actually do. We'd love for you to come up there and do that.
I could do that. But I, I would need to see samples again.
We'll take it back and redesign that right now.
And if Paul told you he can get a list, then he can.
You give us, you give us the file, we'll give you a tax statements that look just like-
I don't know if you could have Paul give me a call where I could talk to him about getting us a test.
I don't know about using that same statement. To me, it's just not, to me, that just doesn't work.
You paid for it. No, we, we paid for it with our tax dollars. So it's, it's ours. It's ours to use any way you want, you know.
But we can change it also. That is something that we do day in and day out in our facility.
Okay, so, um, does any Whitworth use you guys for his printing?
No.
Does Roland use you guys? That I can even ask them?
Well, my ballots, that's, I think she talked to you about that. That's a whole different.
We used to, I, I used to print all the ballots for St. Louis and St. Louis County for, for twenty years.
You know, I feel like those other offices, if they've used you and they can vouch for you?
We have done some of the county printing a few years ago. We've done envelopes, we've done NCR forms.
Now, we probably get those from you guys. I don't know where a purchasing takes care of that.
Right.
You guys probably print our envelopes right now. I don't know who does it.
Thanks, Zoe. That's one of our laws for five dollars.
Right.
Where do they live? Yeah.
Uh-huh, I agree. You had done it and then they came in with a lower, slightly lower bid.
Can you look at this, do you have time to look at this before you go today to see if there's things that were on, that were not on that bid sheet that you missed, like, like Vicki was explaining?
Well, there's, there's things that were not asked, we were not asked-
That's what I just wanted to make sure that, that there's were things that were not asked for in the bid.
Yeah, we, they have nines and tens on there. There's no nine by twelves they asked for. In fact, we even brought that up. I wonder what, I guess they're going to first and I-
But the bottom line is, that's why your bid was cheaper. Because he had more on his bid.
No, Vicki, we're, we're still lower after all of that's cut out. We're still lower.
Seventeen hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Oh, it's a lot of money to me.
It's a lot of money to me personally. But when I'm thinking about the integrity and the taxpayer.
All we can do is prove that through a test and show you the equipment and read the work of-
That's what I'm talking about.
That really just, in this meeting, that's all I'm asking for is that opportunity.
And I, and, and let me sort of step in at this point in time and say, if, if, I think that would be an excellent idea. If we can get some of this worked out going forward, like into next year, and you can review some of their work, see what, whatever you could work out, I think that would be an excellent idea.
Meet with Paul some.
Exactly. Meet with Paul so you know what your, what your data is that's going back and forth.
All I know is that Paul says we use DBF.
Okay. Well, Paul, I don't know if he's here, wherever he's at, is he Springfield?
He just comes here once a week or years.
I'd be glad to come and meet him anytime.
No, he's in Springfield, oh, down by Springfield. He works for Hoover.
It's a computer company that, that we contract with. She has a specific contract with them.
Whether it's here or I need to go down to Springfield or even wherever. Whatever's easiest for him.
Paul needs you here when he's here. We could set it up.
Okay.
Exactly. And that way, exactly. Yeah, I agree, after the first of the year.
He's trying to get that Vanguard.
I know he is. If we could do that, like after the first of the year, you could, and, and look on a forward basis to see if there isn't some mutual ground in here that, that would satisfy them and be acceptable to you.
Sure.
I think that would be great.
That's fine with me.
Is that acceptable, pretty much, to everybody?
Just give us the chance to do that test.
Exactly. Give you a chance to do the test, make sure you can do the, work with the data.
I'm awful at that. I'm awful at that, because I'm a local person.
We are too.
You know, and, but I, it's just something I don't wanna mess with, you know what I mean, and, I'll have it come back and bite me.
And if they're willing to work with you and see if they can run some tests, then I think that would be great. So, would that be agreeable to everybody?
Yeah, it's very agreeable, that's all they ask for.
Absolutely.
But, at the end of that, we want an open mind and a fair shot, though, too, we don't wanna close mine to it, you know.
My mind is not closed.
Okay.
Well, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
That's the only way you can work things out, is to sit down and work them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for me, who do you want to stay?
I think we're okay.
Okay.
As far as I know, I'm ready.
Okay, you can stay or leave.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too, sir.
Take care, Carol. Gary, it was nice meeting you, I think, coming in today.
Thank you very much.
Carol, you take care. Say hi, bye, V and I.
Nice to see you.
All right, take care.
You too, Gary.
We better do that later, thank you. I want me to take care of it.
I appreciate it.
We probably need to go ahead and vote on the bid acceptance on that, I guess, yeah. Because if we don't, she's gonna be behind getting her statement, so.
Well. Let me say this.
Say whatever you'd like for the record.
A seventeen hundred dollar difference, and that bill is substantial, um, to the taxpayers here in this county. This is the second year in a row that they have attempted to, um, participate in the bidding process. They have won, um, they won a bid last year, didn't get it. Um, under the, the guise that it was the post office that was gonna have problems dealing with that kind of volume of mail. And this year, it's, it's now, it's, it's another, um, other reasons that are, that are being put out there. And as, um, the owner of Lake Printing, Gary Lorenz, pointed out, it's a Camden County business, two-thirds of his employees are Camden County residents. They pay an estimated seventy-five thousand dollars a year in taxes. Since they seemed willing- -to try to work with the collector and their software people for next year. I'm willing to vote in favor of this this year, however, next year, um, and leading up to next year, I'm going to ensure that they do get the, the file that they were promised, the ability to show what they're able to do.
All right.
And if they put, put out a satisfactory product, um, and they come in as a low bid, I don't care if it's one penny less, Lake Printing should have that bid. Um, I know it's hard for people to change here that are, um, in this county sometimes, but, um, this is not two thousand and six, businesses are struggling to keep their doors open. Um, and I think we do a disservice by not going out of our way and attempting to give them all of the information they need before the bidding process takes place, um, to show that they can handle, um, the work that we have here at the county, and I think we have that obligation to bring county business to the Ca- to Camden County. And, um, that's, that's my, where I stand on this for next year, if they come in as a low bid, and they've been given the, uh, the paperwork and the files and can do the job, they should have the job, period. And that's my position, I'm very, um, adamant about that, and I'm very upset that, that, um, another round of excuses was put out this year that they didn't get to bid. And, um, I'm not gonna have that next year, I just want whether, um, it, it comes to, um, challenging another official, which I do not wanna do, but I expect the officials to do what they're supposed to do and honor the bidding process. There's a reason there's a bidding process, and I don't think it was followed this year.
Okay. I, I am hopeful that after this discussion, there will be, uh, exchanges back and forth on, on, um, something that will satisfy, perhaps, any of the office holders with Lake Printing, if, you know, whatever it need be. Uh, and, so I am hoping that that will be an ongoing and progressive for next year's bidding. Currently then, I do need a, I would entertain a motion for this year's bid.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that will, of course, will be to Edward J. Rice for this year. Okay, next on our agenda for today is the Sheriff's Security Ag- Agreement, which is with the Whitetail Hunt, uh, we have done this, I don't remember how many years, but we have been doing it for, for a few years, to help provide security for the Whitetail Hunt and keep things orderly, and, um, it has, um, been a very positive, I think, for us so far, so, any discussion?
No, it's a pretty standard agreement.
Mm-hmm.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, health insurance. What are we handling on health insurance?
The, um-
Oh, no, go ahead.
The, the, the company that we've been dealing with, Mutual Medical Plans, um, they wanted, um, if, a type of commitment from us to, before, so they could go forward and start putting things together. Keeping in mind that we have not been able to find, um, another company that does, that is a TPA, under which, how they're doing business. Um, having said that, um, we, we've had discussions with, um, our council, and even though it's a professional service, it's, um, it's not a renewal, since we're going to a new company, and, um, for that reason, I think we would be, um, better to put it under a bid proposal, which we've already submitted, um, to the county clerk's office, and it should be, uh, published in the newspaper.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, uh, we've already received a call from one insurance company by the name of Hayes Insurance, that we're meeting with on Friday. Um, they've looked at, at, at the requirements of what, of what we're wanting in, in a, in a policy, in a, in a T- TPA. And after, we sent that to them yesterday, they were unable to do, uh, the RFP like we're asking, so, but they're, they still were curious as to why we had a twenty-five percent increase this year. So they're gonna come down and, and meet with us on, um, on Friday. In the meantime, um, we're just gonna move forward with, uh, continuing to talk with any company that thinks they can, um, perform the same type of service this company has. It's important for folks to know that Cape Girardeau County, um, went with this proposal about a year and a half ago, I believe. Uh, the first year they, they had Cape Girardeau's contract, they saved, uh, about thirty-two percent. This year, they're on track to save the company twenty percent, and it's to hope that if we do go into this, 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 uh, type of insurance program, um, that we will have realized the same savings, and then be able to turn that, that savings and, um, back to the employee in terms of lower deductibles, and lower, um, copays, and possibly, um, less expense to bring on a spouse or children, so, we're hoping that it'll be a good thing. It's also important to note that, uh, just last night, the, uh, Cape Girardeau, um, pub- public school system unanimously decided they would go with the TPA under Mutual Medical Plans, Inc. So, uh, for the purpose of today's meeting, um, I think we need to make some type of motion to withdraw, um, the, 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 um, vote we had last week in terms of giving-
Enter the, enter to agreement.
Yeah, giving and entering to the agreement with, um, Mutual Medical Plans, and allow the bidding process to continue.
Let me do add, no contracts have been signed there with anybody.
Right.
Uh, including this group, there have been no contracts signed, nothing like that has been completed.
Good point.
Okay, uh, I would entertain a motion then.
Okay, so based, based on, on the advice from council and, um-
Let me add one thing also, though, that, the, also, the, the, um, request for information from the employees is necessary regardless of who we go with.
Right.
Because it is used to bid for the reinsurance.
Exactly.
So that is still not specific to this company.
The only questions we're having, that's been called in, is they, they're worried about giving out, like, the social security number, that's the only thing that they're really worried about.
I got a call, I got a call on that this afternoon from an employee, and I basically told him, they really don't need the, the, the social security number, what they're more interested in, they probably need the date of birth, so they got an idea of the age of, of the person.
They do, they need the age of the group.
And keep in mind, this, this question there is like Bev said, just so they can bid the reinsurance, to be able to give us a quote.
Right.
And if, if any other, um, TPA or companies wanting to bid and, and are gonna need that information, we'll provide that to them as well.
Exactly.
Um, but, but for the sake of time, we have to, they have, whoever ends up with the plan, um, is gonna have to move to get it in place by January one, so.
It is. Okay, with that having been said.
Okay. With that being said, I would make a motion to, uh, withdraw i- at this time, um, the earlier, um, vote we had on awarding our health insurance to Mutual Medical Plans, Inc.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I think it's also worth noting that, um, one of the reasons we've gone to this, um, type of, uh, arrangement with, with a TPA is the fact that our current insurance carrier came in a few, three weeks ago or so with a, with a twenty-five percent rate increase. Uh, you ran the numbers, Bev, and, um, it's, it was about one point five five million dollars we pay a year in-
Premium.
In premiums, and that twenty-five percent increase translates into a three hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollar rate increase.
Three hundred and eighty-seven plus rate increase for the year.
And that is, that is not something that the county can bear, we just don't have that kind of funds, so that's the reason why we've started looking in other directions. Um, a little more than a year ago, a year and a half ago, when, when we first met with our current insurance carrier, and they were mentioning possible rate increases as high as forty percent. Um, we're looking at twenty-five percent this year if we stay status quo, and maybe, oh, who knows what, what the possible rate increase could be next year, so we have to have some type of, um, stability in terms of what our rates are, so we can go on ins- and insure on the employees at no cost.
Uh, we have pretty much been informed that next year's, regardless of what this year's premium is, it will be higher again yet next year, and probably again yet the next year. And, um, to continue where we're at, is strictly kicking the can down the road. Number one, the three hundred and eighty-seven thousand is truly a budget breaker for us. And, and if you're talking even more next year and the following year, uh, it, it is totally prohibitive for the county to continue where we are at.
We pay roughly about, I think, four hundred and five dollars per employee.
Four fifty point five cents, I ran all the numbers, it's four hundred and fifty dollars point five cents per employee per month.
Maybe I was just less than, had an invert- inverted number.
Exactly.
But, you know, to, to try to, to try to just give the employee that amount of money every month and put a mile on exchange, they probably would certainly not have, uh, be able to afford, um, a health insurance policy under the Affordable Care Act. So this is just one other step that we're taking to try to continue, uh, to provide them with, with good health insurance, especially in a catastrophic or major medical type situation. But also in the hopes that if, if they can, if we can realize those savings, uh, to the county, then we have some options for the employees.
And a reminder too, if you try and give it to the employee to purchase his own, it becomes taxable income. Um, no matter what it's used for, it becomes taxable income, uh, as far as their, uh, W-two's and such are, are rated, and as far as anybody that is using, uh, additional outsor- outside sources for insurance or anything else, that then shows, uh, shows a monthly, uh, increase in, in revenue to them, so.
So that's where we are, um, we're hoping, we're hoping, um, well, whatever we come up with is gonna have to be a lot better than what we're currently looking at now.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Don't think so.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved, second.
Uh, second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.